Everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started with our FY twenty six budget deliberations. Today's date is July thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. The time is two thirty P. M. In attendance are Commissioners Eberline, Duncan, and Mitari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment. Hearing none. We'll go to our first and only business item, FY twenty six budget deliberations. It's an action item, and we'll start with Brandy Falcon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Brandy Falcon. For the record, I'm going to start with the preliminary summary. I did sound and send out an updated version just probably a half hour ago. We had a last minute change with our new construction values. And so the result of the change in value was we've lost about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of revenue from new construction. And if you have any questions on that, I'm sure the assessor's office can elaborate. So if we go to the one percent COLA scenario, in order to balance the budget as is, you would have to take a point five eight percent tax increase. So a couple of things that have changed since the last time we met is that there was a recent development that there's a new student resource officer being negotiated between the sheriff's office and a Hayden charter. And so I was able to get the proposed revenues for that contract of a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. So I added that to the budget. Also, last night, the city of Hayden had a budget meeting. Unfortunately, it was not televised, so I was not given the opportunity to watch it. And I never, I still have not received any communication from the city of Hayden. However, I did download this forty-three page spreadsheet off of their website that I believe is the budget they voted to publish. And on page six, it appears they have a line called Kootenay County Sheriff's Salary, one million, two hundred ninety-five thousand. And they have a line called Kootenay County Sheriff's Vehicle for ninety-five thousand. So together, that is one million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And so I have added that to our budget. And I just wanted to clarify, just because we're adding one point three nine million to our budget does not mean part of that is going to buy a vehicle. Those are the finer terms of the contract that will be negotiated between the board and the city council later over the next month or so. That's simply revenue that I've added. That does not mean we're agreeing to, you know, buy a vehicle or whatever. And then the budget does not include right now the new lieutenant that the city of Hayden was requesting initially, and it does not include the vehicle for the new lieutenant. So I'll go through the rest of these preliminary summary scenarios, and then we can either discuss the student resource officer or the city of Hayden contract. So like I said, at a one percent COLA, to balance the budget right now, you have to take a point five percent, point five eight percent tax increase. A one and a half percent COLA, you would have to take a one point one four percent tax increase. A two percent COLA would be a one point seven percent tax increase. A two point one percent COLA would be a one point eight one percent tax increase. Two and a half percent COLA would be a two point two six percent tax increase. And then a two point seven five percent COLA would be a two point five four percent tax increase. So that's where we're standing right now in terms of overall balancing the budget. So by the end of today's meeting, I will need firm direction from the board as to what property tax percentage you want me to publish the budget at and what COLA percentage you want me to publish in the budget. Those are two things that we for sure have to decide on before the end of today's meeting. So I would like to kind of go into the discussion about the student resource officer, the SRO for Hayden Charter. I added the revenue to the budget, but I did want to bring to the board's attention that we do have the opportunity to add a new deputy to backfill that position if you wanted. I'm just bringing it forward for discussion so that you're aware, and you can discuss and decide what you want to do with that.
I guess, does anyone have any questions?
No, I don't have a question, but I would strongly recommend that we do not take the funding if we are not going to make the SRO an addition to the department. So we need to add a deputy for the SRO position to the A budget.
And that's because they come out of the regular patrol.
Yes.
The SRO. You know, I put together a little presentation because I want to talk about this some. And I think what's important for everyone to understand is that as a county commissioner, all of us up here, you know, in the end, we have to make good money management decisions. And so I put together a very, very simple, basic example that I wanted to kind of walk through. And if you just take this example, and I use round numbers just to kind of make it easy for people to follow. The idea is to show the relationship of money and how in some situations we lose money. And I'm not so sure that we fully appreciate what we lose with these contracts that we enter into. And it affects the sheriff's office in the county as well. If you could go to the next, oh, let me explain this. We have ten deputies up here, and the cost for round numbers is two hundred thousand dollars per deputy, and that makes the net cost for the patrol two million dollars. Okay? And so if you can go to the next slide. Suppose we get asked to have three resource officers, right? And they, the schools are going to pay us a hundred thousand dollars. Again, round numbers, just to make the point. So they pay us three hundred thousand dollars. And the county, because it loses deputies off of the patrol, presumably would backfill. But if they, if they don't backfill, yes, they get a little less money, but the levels of service suffer in the county. If they do backfill, that changes the nature and the cost of the, of the, of the service, right? So they pay a hundred thousand, it costs us two hundred thousand, we lose three hundred. And if you go to the next slide, in order to achieve ten patrol deputies to actually perform patrol services, our cost goes up to two point three million. Same level of service, but it's gone up, three hundred thousand dollars, because we've entered into three contracts where we lose money. Okay? So if you go to the next slide, on that one, let's just pretend that the, the contract actually covers the full cost, right? So now the schools are going to pay us two hundred thousand dollars for each of these school resource officers, so it's a wash, right? And that maintains the patrol budget, the net cost, at two million dollars. But is it really a net wash? And so if you go to the next slide, we have roughly a two hundred thousand dollar onboarding cost to backfill those three positions. So to backfill those three positions up there, the red, that's a six hundred thousand dollar expense that the county incurs to backfill these positions. Now, if you can go to the next slide, where did I come up with two hundred thousand dollars? Well, these are the sheriff's numbers, as well as our auditing numbers. And you can see that with a car, because you have to get another car, you're looking at a hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. And then nine and a half months to train that brand-new deputy. The salary on that is seventy-five thousand, eighty-seven dollars, for a total of two hundred thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. That's what it costs. So if you go to the next slide, the reality is that we lose money, about three hundred thousand annually in recurring overhead by entering into a contract using these numbers. And we take on about a six hundred thousand dollar onboarding cost to backfill these positions. So the real question we have is, what are the real numbers? Because if we're going to have six school resource officers, if you can go to the next one. For FY twenty-six, we're looking at six SROs, and the total loaded salary cost is seven hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars. Now, you know, with the Hayden contract, we have overhead. There are support staff that, that, that support the deputies out there. The actual overhead that the auditing department came up with is sixty percent. For the contract in Hayden, we actually offered them a forty percent option. Okay? Because school resource officers are not out on patrol for a large portion of the year, but they still have to train, they still have the, all the same requirements. And they do use some resources in the summertime when they are on patrol. I use a twenty-five percent of their salary as an overhead to go on top of that. And in this particular example, that's a hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars of additional overhead, because there is overhead, there's command staff and so forth. And so if you go to the next slide, the total cost for these six SROs is nine hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. Now, when you go to the next one, you'll see that we've budgeted five hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars in revenue for FY twenty-six. So what that basically means is from a, from a recurring revenue standpoint, we're going to lose three hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars today with the FY twenty-six patrol staffing budget for this particular arrangement. Now, three hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, let me just put this in different terms so we can look at this. The patrol staffing budget is eight million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars. You take that three hundred eighty-three thousand and divide it into there, and that's a four point three percent adjustment to the matrix to help keep our patrol deputies competitive with their costs. If you go to the next one, the next slide, don't forget about the onboarding because we're talking about backfilling now. So with six positions, whether we did it yesterday, or we're looking at doing it today, or some number of that, we're looking at adding one million, two hundred two thousand, ninety-four dollars in expenses, just to backfill these six positions. And again, whether we've done it before, that's money spent. Or we're going to do it into the future, that's money we're going to spend to backfill them. And so when you look at, and this is the final slide, the real potential cost here is about one million, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. We can only levy, our maximum is three percent, it's one million, eight hundred sixty thousand and some change. And so my point with these contracts is that, you know, we have to manage them well because we're, we're effectively hurting ourselves. And those are the numbers. Okay? Now, there's a human side to this as well. Okay? And that human side is that, you know, there's kids, that we can help provide a service to protect the kids in this community, and I understand that. And, you know, that's a good human argument. My human argument is that two years ago, I spent a lot of time and a lot of effort to try to get our deputies up to a point where they were three percent behind Quarterlane. And let me tell you, before that, I talked with some of those deputies. Deputy saying, I'm thinking about leaving because I'm not making as much here as I could in other places. Or about those sergeants who get another resignation letter. Or the lieutenants and captains that have to figure out their new schedules because they're losing deputies again to surrounding agencies. And if we don't manage our money correctly, we're going to find ourselves sliding back further and back. And we're going to be back to where we were. And that's what I so desperately want to avoid, and that's my human side to this. Am I saying we shouldn't have SROs? No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that when we make these decisions, we need to look at the total fiscal impact to the budget and how it affects us in future years. That if we're going to, if we're going to have six SROs, we should be talking about what it's going to cost to backfill those positions. And are we going to make as much as we, we should be making on these? And I understand other agencies don't collect as much. I think Quarterlane collects fifty, fifty-five percent for these things. I don't know, it's what one of the council members told me the other night when I was speaking with him. But the reality is that I don't want to see us go backwards. And that's why I'm fighting so vigorously to get this Hayden contract to where it needs to be, so we can stop losing money, start getting paid what it really costs the county. And so I'm okay if the board wants to have SROs, I'm totally okay with that. But I want us to have that conversation with the absolute fiscal impact. And the other reason why I have a little bit of a problem with it is because, like the cities, they can levy their own taxes. They can pay for this if they want to. I've heard poverty time and time again, we don't have the money, we can't afford it, can't do it. Same thing with the schools, they are their own taxing districts. And let me tell you, when they give their employees a three to five percent COLA, and we're looking at, you know, somewhere between one and two, maybe two and a quarter, I'm tired of this county being the, the backstop for all these other agencies. And that's my approach to it. And I want our own staff to get paid well. I want us to have the best deputies. I don't ever want to hear about a deputy leaving because we don't pay well enough. And we're going to slide backwards if we continue to get into these contracts where we think it's covering most of the cost, but we're not looking at it from a holistic perspective. So that, those are my thoughts to this board when it comes to this. And if there's a mistake in the numbers, I encourage, I mean, I want to hear it. But I worked pretty closely with our auditing department and looked at this, and these are the actual numbers. So I'm happy to take any questions, I'm happy to, you know, hear your comments and thoughts. But that's where I kind of stand with this, and we need to address this, if not today. And I don't think today is the day where we fully can address it. But I think moving forward, we have to start asking ourselves, why do we want to enter into these agreements? If there's still a loss and there's a backfill cost for every one of them, especially when the taxing districts could pay more if they wanted to.
Commissioner, undersheriff Brett Nelson, for the record, just for our clarification going forward, obviously not having negotiating authority, are, is there a point where you're, we should tell them, them being the school districts, to seek, start looking towards a hundred percent funding for their position?
I think we should be doing that from day one, honestly. But let's look at the total numbers. Because when you say yes to an SRO, when you want to get into this contract, there's a two hundred thousand dollar price tag, assuming we, we have someone in the pipeline and backgrounds that can be hired. You know, it's another car, it's training, it's more equipment. And the other thing, too, that we don't talk about is that every time we add a car, that's a bigger fleet, which means every year, we're going to be rotating a larger number of vehicles. And again, these are things that dig into our future cash flows. And, you know, one of the things that I don't think people appreciate, especially in the world of business, people don't, businesses don't fail, and Mark, I know you know this. Businesses don't fail because they have one big expense that puts them out of business. It's because they have five hundred little expenses they're not watching. And it's because of those little expenses they're not watching, that's what makes them go underwater. And that's why most businesses, about eighty percent of them fail in the first five years, because they don't know how to manage those, those small expenses correctly, and they end up just sinking. They, they can't keep it. And so I would argue, from my perspective, is that the more we can get fully compensated for the services that the sheriff's office performs, the more money that's going to be left over to divide among the sheriff's deputies to keep their pay competitive, so that we don't have to dig into future cash flow. Because there's a limit to what this board can do. This year, that limit is about one point eight million dollars, right? And, you know, next year, it might be a little bit more. But when we have these little tiny expenses that we don't fully understand and appreciate, they add up, and then they end up nipping us later. And that's why you see a lot of these other agencies go into forgone taxes, because they miscalculated. Now, I personally think, and I'd love to be able to have a conversation at some point, of how many patrol deputies should we have in this county? Because I don't believe the sheriff's office has added a patrol deputy in years. I mean, a meaningful number. But the population has grown pretty significantly. And I think that that's something that we need to talk about. And I would be more apt to having that conversation than figuring out how to take people that we've hired off the street and put them someplace else. Again, I understand the human side of it, and there's two human sides, you know?
Understanding that with the hundred percent funding going forward, we can tell our constituents, with regards to this specific position, we came before the board in May of this year seeking potential approval if they got this grant. We didn't have this discussion then, so they went and sought this total amount for the wages for this deputy's position, and we got tentative approval. Hence, they came back and got the approval. I guess, where do we stand as an entity, as the county, at this point, since we gave them temporary, or initial approval of this grant to seek for their funding to in turn place the deputy there?
I, I think a hundred percent, and I'm speaking for me, the board obviously has the final say, but a hundred percent's better than seventy percent. But the other question that comes with it is, are we prepared to make the expense to backfill that position? And, and that's really the other side to it. And the other, and the other component to this is as we add more people, that three, four, five percent COLA that we might have to give to keep the, the patrol deputies, the jailed deputies competitive, is spread about, a spread among more people, because the SROs, SROs are not exclude, they're, they're not excluded from those COLAs. So again, it's just another one of those things we have to think about. As we expand the operation, as we expand our overhead, so too is our maintenance costs.
Just for consideration, and to just refresh everybody's memory, Robert North, Sheriff, that there is a community value to this. These SROs do handle calls for service at that school and other schools. And it does not take a drain from our patrol because they're there at those schools. There, there is a benefit that the community has, and from a patrol delivery standpoint, that we have, because they're there handling it. So I, I appreciate the numbers here, but the sheriff is really the only one that is eligible to do the school resource officer at this location.
Well, I think the part that sometimes is a little hard is that, you know, I hear stories, but I'd love to see the numbers to justify that, you know? Because if you, if we were in inner-city Chicago, I could imagine how much a school resource officer is busy. But we're in North Idaho, and I'm trying to understand if, if we didn't have a school resource officer, would that deputy be driving to the school, taking care of the issue, leaving, driving back, leaving, driving back, leaving, driving back, that they're that busy? Or is it, you know, is there really a potential loss to the overall service to the community because we pulled someone off of patrol? I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying it's hard for me because it's, you know, it's, I'm always looking for the case to be shown and not told. It, it's easier, you know, to understand that. And I haven't seen that yet, so I'm, I'm not saying you're not right. But again, the school districts are their own taxing entities. And they can levy taxes, too. And when they ask the county to subsidize that, it's at the expense of not only the county taxpayer, because it forces our hand, but it's at the expense, a lot of times, of the employees, too. And that's the side that I'm kind of looking at from a human side.
But not only does that school resource officer provide a degree of security at that school, for instance, I've spent time with our school resource officers. They know the children that are at risk, the kids that are at risk. If we have a burglary, a daytime burglary that occurs from truance that should have been in the school, they have a pretty good idea, okay, you know, I think I know who this is. And then through other investigative means, they make a case that, yep, this is the student, the fifth grader that didn't do this. So it's really, really, does impact us beyond just the school. It impacts people's residence, people that get items stolen. It impacts the social media problems that we're experiencing in the schools is off the chart.
I don't doubt that. And again, you're telling me these stories, right? But, you know, and the law of probability says by having a deputy in the school, you're going to have these things solved. But the question is, how many of these are happening? Are they happening every week? Or are they happening once a year, once every six months? Because you eventually have to assign a cost to, to these things, you know? There's always a cost. I mean, as much as I hate to say it, insurance companies have a cost for a limb, they have a cost for a life, they have a cost for these things, right? And so I'm, as a commissioner, trying to balance the cost of performing this public service in a school and making sure that we keep the people that we have by engaging in contracts that pay as much as possible. Because when a deputy leaves, what happens to the SRO contract? Does, if, does that mean that the service level degrades a little bit on the street because we're not paying well enough and we're continuing to fill the SRO? You know, there's a lot of questions here, and I'm just trying to get to the point of, how do we? My question is, how do we pay our deputies the most possible so that we never lose them to pay?
And I agree with you. But this, this county is growing, and if we don't want to grow the sheriff's office commensurate with the needs of this county, I would suggest that we not have any more growth. But that, that would be my ideal situation. However, this county's growing, the mental health in this county is at an unstable level. So I, I believe that there is value in this, even though it might not shake out in the numbers. The totality from handling a parent who's irate with a teacher that responds to the school to a suicide at the school. These, these school resource officers talk to these kids and these parents twenty, thirty times a day.
Again, I don't disagree. My point is that the school districts have their own levying ability. I, I'm not against the school resource officer program. What I'm against is doing it at such a loss that we don't have the money to pay people appropriately. That's what I'm against. If these, if the school districts couldn't levy money, it'd be a completely different conversation. But they can do it. They, you know, one district gave their staff a three to, a three to five percent COLA last year. Three to five percent for different staff levels. I mean, this is what they're doing while they're not able to pay us. And to me, it's the same thing as the city contract. If their priorities are in giving the COLA to their employees and not paying for the services that we're providing, then they've set their, their priorities. Or parks, if parks is more important than providing law enforcement services, they've set their priorities for their community, you know? And that's how I'm kind of looking at it. Again, I, I don't disagree with the value proposition that you're saying, and that there's some intangibles here. But I don't hear anyone in the county saying, you know, I love working here so much, I'm going to work for a free day. You know, we're talking about our COLAs, we're talking about competitive salaries. So I never get it on the other side here. You know, when it just comes to giving, there's the human side. When it comes to asking for this board for money, I never, I mean, I don't know, maybe one of the commissioners up here gets the, gets the, you know, the human factor for, you know, don't worry about a COLA this year, I'm happy, I like it. This is my way of giving to the community. And that's why it's kind of hard to, to balance those stories with the reality of what we're facing, you know, with respect to the staffing demands and needs and, and the, the resources, the B-budget items and all of that kind of stuff. We can spend it on a car, a new car to backfill a position, or we can spend it on the latest and greatest of something else. But the money is finite, no different, no different than the cash that's in the wallet here. Whatever you have is what you can spend it on. So you can buy yourself lobster and steak, you can take a date out with it, or you can actually feed your kids. But it's finite, and, and that's the challenge we have. And that's the part I'm trying to convey here, is that, I mean, if you want to have a law enforcement levy to help get more money, I, I support that if you want to go down that road, but we're confined by what we have. And as long as we are engaging in these agreements where we're losing money, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, is what I'm trying to point out. And there's a cost to that, and that cost is not having the money for the other things that we probably should be thinking about, too.
And I guess, the way that I look at it is that this county is growing, and this is a way to subsidize the needs of law enforcement, so.
Yeah, and you're. Yeah, and you're right.
Looking at it differently.
It is growing, but you see, in the world of business, it's, the language is numbers, okay? You know, and we're managers in essence. We're all, the elected officials are managers of their department. So if the community's growing, how much is it growing each year? Well, how, how much are the calls for service growing? How is the patrol staff growing? When it was a lot, you know, what, things like that, right? Then you can make the case of what we're going to get by paying more for the service. The problem is right now, okay, is that, and we all know this, growth doesn't pay for itself here. It doesn't pay for itself. And so, you know, the, the only thing left for us is to look at these numbers, a trend over time, and then say, where do we need to be and what do we have to do to get there? But, you know, by saying we're growing, no one can argue with that. But by what we should be doing is the sixty-four thousand dollar question. Should we be backfilling three deputies? How is that going to affect things? Two deputies, six deputies, ten deputies? We don't have answers to that question. And that's what I would like to investigate and get to, and then we can figure out how to get to where we need to be.
And you speak about numbers. Our five school resource officers service the seven schools throughout Dalton Gardens, Hayden, and the county area handled themselves two-hundred-and-fifty-one calls surrounding the schools. That being said, and just your numbers, I'd ask again what the direction is from the board for Hayden Charter, since they obtained this grant and we're moving forward. Are they going to take their money and seek from another law enforcement entity in the county? I don't know what the direction to be.
Commissioner Duncan, I rely on your thoughts.
I'd like to include it with the understanding that now we have some numbers to present to the schools for their next budget consideration and that we come back and be able to, next year FY twenty-seven for us, be able to get closer, if not, you know, to that hundred percent, including some onboarding. But I think for this year, that it would be fair to include that deputy.
And then are we going to backfill? Because, you know, we hope we should appropriate funds for that.
That's what I mean. That's, well.
Commissioner Oberlin, your thoughts on that?
Well, usually, in the real world.
Microphone.
You pay to play. And so if the schools aren't playing, then why are we supporting the schools? Why don't they have their own levies to put it together? Because that's, otherwise, it's on the backs of every single solitary taxpayer.
Commissioner Oberlin, if I may speak, in their defense, they've known different up to this point. Now we have a direction to go to. I, I will speak on behalf of the Lakeland School District. Their most recent levy passed partially because of the support to have or keep SROs in their schools as opposed to going to private security.
That's good.
But now that we have direction from the board moving forward, there is, again, not having negotiation, negotiating authority, we can at least provide them with some insight as to the direction of the board.
That's good, so we should be able to move forward then.
Going forward.
Yes.
I mean, I, I think what you're hearing is, moving forward, we should be seeking full reimbursement for the cost of the deputies. And let's not subsidize this in such a way that it, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, and maybe the board thinks differently, that if they subsidize the cost of the deputy, we subsidize the cost of the backfill. Because everyone gets a benefit with that. But at least, at least we're, you know, we're dedicating that person. Yeah, there'll be a few months where they're not working, but there's still a cost associated with the overhead of keeping a person on staff.
Okay, so if the commissioners were going to add a new deputy FTE to FY twenty-six budget, that would be a total cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand and thirty-one dollars. So when I add that to our preliminary summary, that is a direct reduction, obviously, of the funds available for a COLA. So now if we go back, I have to update everything. So a two-point-one percent COLA, you now have to take a two-point-two-one percent tax increase. We could go down to a two percent COLA. Let me see here. So a two percent COLA, you would have to take a two-point-one percent tax increase. Going down to a one-point-five percent COLA. So to take a one-point-five percent COLA, you would have to take a one-point-five-four percent tax increase. So, and I still don't know what COLA percentages the board is looking at, so like if I go to a two-point-five percent COLA. So if you want to do a two-point-five percent COLA, now you have to take a two-point-six-six percent tax increase. So does that make sense? It just, you know, lowers the funds available for the COLA, which just means you have to take a higher tax increase. Which is, I mean, it's up to you what you want to do. So are you wanting to add this deputy in to the budget to backfill this Hayden Charter SRO position or not?
I, I do have a question for the sheriff's office. I've heard this, but I don't know what the numbers are, that we're falling further and further behind Coeur d'Alene PD. We were three percent behind them two years ago for patrol. Do you know where we are today with that? And if not, do you expect to come before the board asking for money to get them back up into parity where we were two years ago? Because that will be money that we're going to have to have to cover to keep our, our deputy pay competitive. Because I remember, you know, that was one of the challenges, we couldn't even get qualified applicants, which when you got a resignation meant we're not going to be filling this position for months, if not at least a year or two. So that's why I ask these questions, because to me, the number one thing, the first thing we should be doing is taking care of our people, making sure that we're not losing them to pay, and then after that, we can have discussions about helping everyone else. And I equate this to the oxygen mask falling down out of the plane. You put it on yourself first before you put it on the kids.
Commissioner, to answer your question, as we've been told, both Post Falls and the City of Coeur d'Alene are seeking considerable COLAs this year, which in turn, to stay consistent with what the sheriff has since taking office asked for, simply stay competitive to those local agencies, not to be the top paid. So obviously down the road, to stay competitive, there's going to have to be some moving of the mark, if you will. What that is, to be told.
Yeah. So that, that's my only fear, is that we keep saying yes to more stuff and, you know, these contracts, and we're going to be hit with, you know, trying to maintain some sort of professional competitive pay for these positions. And, you know, I think when we dealt with that two years ago, it was about a one-point-seven million dollar, one-point-five to one-point-seven million dollar increase for that jump in pay.
Would the board consider giving this, the position, but freezing it because of our training cycles? I mean, we, we can only train so many people so fast. So would, would you consider freezing, freezing the position until next year?
Do you all have thoughts on that?
Well, you haven't been full in patrol for a long time, so it's going to be pretty fun to see what that looks like on, you know, the deputy's quality of life and, and all of that. So I don't have a problem with that, because again, you already have so many in the hopper, so many being trained, that I, I think that's fine. If you were still down five or six deputies, I think that'd be a problem.
Yeah. Mark, do you have a thoughts on it?
I have a couple.
Just two?
I can make it more if you'd like.
No, we need to get this thing taken care of.
I mean, my only concern with adding them and freezing them is that, you know, we're, again, sitting up here for the last two and a half years, you know, it's little tiny yeses that lead to the big yes. Say yes today, decide tomorrow. And I would rather, it, it has net, doesn't affect the budget. So when the time has come to present expanding the patrol staff, we should have that discussion. But saying yes to this, only to have another decision before the board for another tree without discussing the forest is the part that I'm averse to. And this has nothing to do with the sheriff's office. This has to do in general, that I, I'd like to understand what it is that we're adding overhead to the county for, before saying yes to that. And, and if we're not going to have it in the budget, then it doesn't matter. We can add that anytime.
I would also add that there are some municipalities that will tell their elected officials and say, hey, guess what? You're freezing two positions, you're freezing one position, you're freezing two positions. We just don't have the revenue for it this year. But I, I've seen that happen.
Well, and that's the way they want to operate, and that's okay. But I think, you know, from my perspective, if the board disagrees, I mean, you know, if they, if you get the nod from the other two commissioners, that's fine. But from my perspective, I would rather us have a discussion about where patrol should be and how many positions we should add, and then we can all agree on that, and then we'll fund those positions. But we, I mean, I've been up here for two and a half years, we've never had this discussion. The last two years, you've been plugging holes. Now you're above water. So let's have that conversation in a meaningful holistic way for the community as opposed to piecemealing it. Because that's the problem is, again, I, I gave this example last time. We had a situation where we funded a position, we never created it in HR, and then we were told, well, you put it in the budget, so it must be there, so you must give it to us. Well, it was never funded. I mean, it was never created because we never went forward. And so that's why I'm leery of adding to an org chart without understanding what it means in the bigger picture.
Commissioner, like you, this would be my third cycle for the budget. The last two years, getting specific with SROs, there's been no discussion other than what we've had, the seventy-thirty, understanding that we've generated this time, we know where to go forward. I go back to the question in regards to this for Hayden Charter. What direction should I give them from our staff on behalf of the board regarding their grant that they secured?
Well, do you want to backfill a position? It's another two-hundred grand?
No.
Can we freeze it for a year, Commissioner?
Yes.
Well, what do you mean by freezing it? Like creating it and?
Freezing it, yes.
Well, in essence, what that does is that adds another person to the org chart.
I understand, but, but how?
But we're, we're going to have an Academy Award presentation in the coming months on what the needs of this county are as pertains to law enforcement. So, but I don't think it hurts anything, because you can still take it away next year. I don't think it hurts anything by freezing it and not adding it into the budget.
Well, why is it so important to add it, just out of curiosity? I mean, if we can add it in the middle of the year or we can take it away, why is it so important to add it?
I think it's just a place marker to, to remind everybody that, hey, this is, we need to do this also, just to keep us whole as far as our patrol is concerned.
Like, can we add positions mid-year?
Of course.
And not fund them?
It's not, it's not just good to do that.
You can, but you increase the budget.
Well, no, if you just don't, if you, can we add one in December, let's say, but not fund it?
Literally, all that means is you add a new position number in New World. That is all that means.
Yep.
And it's one of hundreds.
So.
If you fund it.
Saying if there's no funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we, at the last meeting on July twenty-third, we had this whole discussion about freezing positions, and the board decided not to do that. And if you want to change your mind, that's totally fine. I'm just reminding you, this is like the second or third time we've talked about this. And so when you add a position but freeze it, there's no money in the budget, there will never be money in the budget for that position until it comes back at either mid-year meeting or another budget cycle, and the board agrees to fund it. So.
But the same thing could occur in December. We could add a position and then decide to fund it if we wanted to, right?
If you wanted to fund it mid-year, you would be increasing next year's budget outside of the budget cycle, but do that.
So from the stylistic perspective, speaking just for myself, I would rather us not put the position in. You give us the world-class presentation, and we might end up putting two, three, or four positions in and then talking about funding those. That's my preference.
This, this board, and I'm looking around for some institutional history, we've been freezing positions for, for years. I mean, I, I remember that we had froze positions, four deputy positions, I want to say, three years ago. So.
Freezing positions.
I think it's six, six to one, half a dozen.
What we haven't done is add them to freeze them. What we've done is we've taken existing positions and frozen them. And that's the difference. One is adding, making the org chart bigger, okay? The other is taking the existing org chart and just blanking out a particular position, still leaving it there, but there's no dollars. What you're asking for is to expand the org chart and not put any money to it. And I'm saying, I'm happy to expand the org chart. I'd like to see the world-class presentation first, and then we can expand it as many positions as we should and not worry about funding them until we have to. That's my preference. If the board sees it differently, then that's fine too.
I think I said Academy Award, not world-class, but I think it'll be an Oscar.
Well, I look forward to it, and I hope to be the person to hand it to you, but it might be one of the other two.
I just, my only concern is I want to keep track of this position, because again, we're already down two patrol by, by not backfilling with SROs. So I just want to keep track of it. So that'd be my reason for keeping it in and freezing it, just so we're not further losing track of what's happened.
And with that, currently, we have two openings in patrol. We were fully staffed for about ten days.
Oh, that, that beats, under Sheriff Matos's record of eight hours.
We, we have.
We have people in the background.
We have.
Correct, but that would be a third, you said, adding. So yes, to get back to what we once were at some point with the positions taken out for SROs.
Yep.
Okay, so it sounds like, and you correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like the board is okay with adding the revenue for the Hayden Charter SRO, or no? What I'm, what am I hearing on that?
I think right now, what you're hearing, unless someone disagrees, is add the revenue.
Okay.
With the understanding that the sheriff's office is going to seek full reimbursement for these things moving forward. And that, the answer to your question, unless there's an objection to that, I believe that's the answer to your question.
Yeah, and is the schools going to put up with that?
We'll see.
That's to be determined, Commissioner. Once we go back and explain to them the direction provided to us, we'll allow them to come before the board and have that discussion and negotiate, if you will.
Because I, I look at it as a play to pay. Because if the schools aren't doing it, why are, why are we providing all the services and having all the people that we have in the, in the schools?
I think part of the value comes in deterrence. They see the cop car there, they, they understand that we have law enforcement there.
That's, that's part of the factor too, and that's, that's the purpose of it. But why is Cootney County sheriff's officers taking the time to do that? Why don't, why doesn't, why don't they do, the schools do it on their own?
Sir, the, the part of it is, is it's an industry standard within law enforcement. And again, numbers just within the county and regionally. The reality of it is, is that's where, Southern California, where we came from.
So you wear a badge, and if you're in the school and you're a school resource officer, you're wearing a badge.
There was a time and place in my thirty-three years that their school police, before they became, there was law enforcement officers from an agency, and then they transitioned to school police, having their own police agencies, in turn provided school resource officers. But in this county, what I've grown to, to see and learned, that it's not only a want, but tends to be an expectation because of the proximity to local law enforcement where our county schools are located within the jurisdictional areas. But again, conveying the message of the board to the schools and the school districts will provide them the insight that they can come before the board and have the discussion and negotiate the service.
As it should be.
Okay, so, Brandy, do you have direction on that?
Yes, I'm going to add the revenue for the Hayden Charter contract, but we are not going to be adding a deputy at this time to backfill. That will come forward at a later date with a presentation from the sheriff's office. Does that sound accurate?
That's my preference.
I'm still okay with freezing a position just to keep track of it, because several of us spent quite a while trying to track down what happened to the other SRO positions that were meant to be backfilled and never were. So that's just my preference. track down what happened to the other SRO positions that were meant to be backfilled and never were. So, that's just my preference.
Mark, what, what would you like to do on that? Would you like to add a new position to freeze it?
No.
All right, so it sounds like two out of three commissioners do not want to add a new position to freeze it.
Not until we go through the presentation, and then I'm sure I'll be very open to it.
Perfect. So we're going to move on from that. Next will be the discussion regarding the contract with the city of Hayden. So like I explained, I added the revenue of the $1,390,000. What I need board direction on is if we should add the lieutenant that Hayden initially requested, as well as the car for that lieutenant. And so it's helpful to remember that when we publish the budget, we are limited by the amount that we publish. We cannot go above that, we can only go down. So if we were to publish our budget without a lieutenant, that means that we would not, we would not have one in our adopted budget for the city of Hayden. And so given that there's so much uncertainty, at least for me, and no clarity at the moment on what they want, I would recommend that we add the lieutenant, add the vehicle, that we fund the lieutenant by increasing Hayden's revenues above the 1.39. We fund the vehicle with our own fund balance, and that way, we publish high. And if the city of Hayden is unable to come to agreements with the county commissioners regarding the lieutenant, before we adopt our budget at the end of August, we can cut the lieutenant and the car and the associated revenues. So that would be my recommendation, but I wanted to hear the board's thoughts on that.
Thoughts? I'm okay if we put it in, with the understanding that we can take it out, obviously, if it's not agreed to.
Perfect.
My sense from Hayden is that they are very wedded to the idea of having a lieutenant. So it's just a matter of how we get there.
Are they going to pay?
Well, they, they will, because I believe that we shouldn't be accepting money or providing a service unless the service is covered.
I agree.
So, but if we have it in there, we can bring it down. It's just harder to put it in later.
Okay, so the board is okay if I add the lieutenant and the vehicle, but offset that with revenues? So that it's a net neutral to the bottom line of the budget? And hopefully, we get some clarity from the city of Hayden in the coming weeks. And then the only other thing that is, that I need from you is to give me your decision on a COLA percentage and a tax increase percentage for publishing the budget. And keep in mind, the COLA percentage that you choose today, it will be set. We cannot change it after we publish the budget, and that is due to the nature of our accounting system. Once I enter the COLA into the system, it's pretty irreversible. I can't undo it. And so the COLA percentage you choose today, I just want you to be committed to staying with that COLA percentage through budget adoption at the end of the month. And so if you give me a COLA percentage today, you're doing that with the understanding that you are increasing taxes. And so if you agree to a COLA percentage today, and yet at the end of the month, you tell me you won't vote to increase taxes, we're going to have a little bit of a problem, because I'm trying to do my best to help you understand what's going on with the budget. And so that's just what I need direction from the board on, and I can go back over these scenarios again, the COLA percentages and the associated tax percentage increases.
Sheriff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one more sheriff's office issue before we go there. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, in November of last year, the voters of this county overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly elected me to be their sheriff by about a 50%, 48% margin. And there was another candidate, I don't remember his name, but he ran on the subject of ALPRs, Automated License plate readers. And that candidate came in 48% behind me. This county has entrusted me that I would safeguard this information, that this information would only be used for crime fighting and officer safety. We've had some implementation issues. We've had some factory resets that we had to do. We, we had some connectivity issues with, with the program, and we even started the program late because I did a town hall meeting and invited members of the community to come so they could hear the real facts about the ALPR, not the misinformation that was out in the community by certain individuals or groups. So I'd like, this system, it absolutely, since we've been able to play with it, it monitors every keystroke that puts in, gets put into that system, every single one. So our auditing, our verification that this system is not being abused is 100% present. And I'd like a reconsideration on that. I did talk to Commissioner Eberlein. He is very supportive of officer safety, and I have ensured him that, and all the voters of this county, that this will only be used for crime fighting and officer safety purposes only.
And on top of that, he's promised to make sure that we get all the information that we possibly need, and if it's, and if it's a failure, it fails.
If it's a failure, it fails.
So Brandy, I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
So the numbers that we, we talked about earlier today, 1.1 or 1.81%
Yep.
And, and 2.1% on the COLA.
Yep.
What, what effect does that have now?
Yep, give me one second. I'm looking it up right now. So the cost of the ALPR program is $24,000. So let me add that in really quickly. So if we go to the 2.1% COLA scenario, we would have to do 1, 1, 4, 4, 7, 4, 9. So at a 2.1% COLA, adding back the ALPR, we would have to take approximately a 1.85% tax increase. So we'd still be below 2%.
Okay. Because, because there's citizens out there in the county out there that also want their taxes to be lower because it's very expensive.
Right.
And so, and I understand it, too, with all the employees. So what happens, what happens if you, so you had a, what was the amount?
Yeah, so if you add back the ALPR at a 2, and then do a 2.1% COLA, you would have to take approximately a 1.85% tax increase.
So why don't you take a 1.81% tax increase, keep it the same as the amount for, and then increase the COLA a little bit?
Um, so keep it.
Two and a half percent?
So if we go to a two and a half percent COLA, that is more expensive than a 2.1% COLA. So you would have to take a higher tax increase. You would have to do, let's see, 1, 4, 2, 2, 8, 4.
And I have a question when you're done.
Yeah, so if you wanted to do the 2.5% COLA, you would have to take a 2.29% tax increase because the, that is a more expensive COLA.
2.26?
2.29% tax increase. This, this is outdated because it just changed, so. So it'd be 2.29% tax increase if you wanted to do a 2.5% COLA. And Commissioner Mataro, what was your question?
I was just curious what the two and a quarter percent COLA is, but.
I don't have that. So your options.
There's a dollar amount, there's a dollar amount addition for each quarter point, you know, that's all. It's all right. It's okay.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but.
I mean, we're really just trying to get, I think, around 2%.
Around a 2% COLA, so.
I'd prefer 2.5% if we can, we're just going to go backwards.
COLA or tax?
COLA. I thought you said COLA.
I was referring to tax.
Oh, I thought you were referring to.
2%, like a 2% on, on the budget, not a 2% COLA.
So were you saying two and a?
I was saying two and a quarter for the COLA.
Okay, I don't have that, but.
Yeah, I know. Don't worry about it. But you're talking about a COLA, 2.5%.
2.5% COLA, yeah.
Yeah, so that comes in at, what, a 2.3?
Yes, tax increase.
Tax increase.
Yeah, 2.29, so. I, and I would, I mean, if you're willing to do it, publish high 2.5% just in case things don't shake out or go sideways.
But you're saying.
Between.
I think she was saying we do need to lock in the COLA based on the financial system.
Right. So I'd prefer 2.5% COLA, and if we published high at a 2.5% tax increase,
Okay.
then we can lower that, but there's just some things that still need to shake out, I think.
Okay, what are your, what are the thoughts of the other two commissioners?
I'd rather have a, I'd rather have a 1.81 dollar tax increase percent.
Okay, which would be the 2.1% COLA, okay? What about you, Commissioner Mataro?
Well, it looks like we have a floor and a ceiling. So, you know, I'm okay with publishing the higher number with the understanding that we need to figure out where we're going to land on.
But I don't think we can do that with the COLA. We have to land on the COLA today. And then we can always reduce the tax increase the last week of August.
Yeah.
But the COLA, I don't think we can.
Correct, yeah, the COLA, the tax percentage, you can publish the tax percentage high, but whatever COLA percentage you choose today,
We're stuck with that.
you're going to have to stick with. Yeah, yeah, you're stuck with it.
Hey. So what's, what's 2.5 COLA?
So a 2.5% COLA would be approximately a 2.29% tax increase.
Okay, so I think those were the numbers that I put out first.
So is that, is that what you want to do?
Yeah, because I, I think I, I think I wanted to do the, you know, up to a two and a half percent COLA.
Okay, perfect. So you're okay with a two and a half percent COLA and a 2.29% tax increase? Okay, what about the other two?
I'm okay with that. I, I understand what Commissioner Duncan is saying. I just, I mean, what are your concerns that you want to have a little bit of wiggle room?
Well, I'll bring up 911. There's nothing before us, but I'm still concerned because we're down to eight full-time people with five in training, and we have four in backgrounds. So that is still a dire need. They'll be coming back before us for the extension of bonuses based on salary savings, because these people are working 512s now.
Yeah.
So I don't know at this point if there's anything else to do there, but I, I don't know, I just, I also want the Hayden contract signed, or at least more inked.
Why are we?
But that won't, that wouldn't change that.
Well, the Hayden contract, I mean, the numbers, they've at least budgeted their numbers, so. But what is going on at 911 that, I mean, we put the pay at Spokane, we started getting applications.
Spokane's higher than us now.
Well, how come we're not bringing that in these budget discussions?
The longevity pay and other things were, I guess, more.
I mean, you know.
Front, center, so. But that's fine. I, I can totally live with a 2.29. That's, that's fine, with a 2.5% COLA.
Leslie, were you considering, like, publishing at 2.5 and maybe having a pool, you're saying, potentially?
Well, I don't, I'm not there yet. I'm just not even there. So that's why I'm just saying, today, there's just so many things still kind of up in the air that I'd be comfortable with that, but I can totally live with 2.29.
What's the difference in pay between us and Spokane?
I don't have that off the top.
I mean, what are we, what are we losing? I mean.
Well, we're not losing people to other departments necessarily. We're, it's just a hard job, and with 512s, it's just a lot of work.
It makes it even harder. That's the problem, is that you start to hit a critical mass and it literally comes apart.
Lieutenant Jeff Howard, for the record. To be honest with you, I didn't see this coming, the 911 director for Cootney County. We've, as of today, we lost another trainee. We've lost one to retirement earlier in the year and another one in June. So by the time that we started getting the budget set, at the time, everything was looking up. And then there's a, it wasn't a snowball that was dropped on our laps, it was a relatively large one, and it's getting a little bit out of control. In order for me to maintain minimum staffing, I have to have them work five 12-hour shifts. Spokane, at the meantime, is up to what I've been told, is tops out at $50 an hour for a dispatcher. And our dispatchers do 911 call-taking, dispatch for law, and dispatch for fire. So that's three disciplines that they have to learn, as opposed to Spokane, who they do one or the other. So we're asking our 911 dispatchers fantastic staff. I want to put that on the table. They're very dedicated.
Hold that towards you. Towards you.
Towards you closer.
There you go.
They're very dedicated. They know what they're doing. They understand how important they are to this community. So that's why they're willing to work those, these ungodly hours. But at the end of the day, you mentioned it, Commissioner Mataro, the human factor comes into play, and they also would like time with their families. And somehow, some way, we're going to have to readdress this and find some sort of a incentive for them to stay.
Well, I will just say this. I'll share it just from my own experience in business. It's R and D, replicate and duplicate. If it's working in Spokane, it seems to be working in Post Falls. Maybe we should be splitting the disciplines. You know, maybe we're just, maybe it's too much.
That would require us to triple our staff.
Well, I understand that, but right now, you're on the verge of collapse. And you're not keeping people. And so, you know, I mean, I commend the folks that are there, because I've been there. I, you know, we debated this almost two years ago to try to get this problem fixed and to discover that we're right back where we were. It says that if you, you know, you know the definition of insanity. Keep doing the same thing over and expect a different outcome. So at this point, I, I would say everything's on the table, whatever you guys can do.
No, I appreciate that. And just to make clear, I'm not asking for anything today. We aren't asking anything to be done right this second, but I just want it known that these people are working a lot. I have one employee who's on her, I think, 31st day in a row.
You can't do that. It's not sustainable.
No, no, not at all.
Mistakes happen.
No. I mean, I would even be looking at, at the contract company again, just to bring some relief. I realize that there were problems with that, too. But we can save this for another discussion. This meeting is gone.
That's not what this was about, but in regards to Commissioner Duncan wanting to save some wiggle room, I'm not going to speak on her behalf, but I sure would appreciate having a little bit in order to talk later down the road.
You know, if, if I have a second on this, we should be having a monthly meeting on this. I mean, frankly, I haven't heard anything, and normally, when I don't hear things from people, they're generally okay. They generally don't show up and say, by the way, the building is raging burning and has been doing that for the last several months. Sorry, you know.
Well, and I think having the five in training and four in backgrounds, I mean, that's very, very positive. The problem is the training takes a year, and then when you have people drop out of training is.
Well, but then you also, when you lose staff, you lose your ability to train. So, you know, it, it's a spiral downward, and, and we need to get to the, we need to get to your problem before you hit critical mass, and it comes apart. That's the point. The sooner you can get to it, the easier it is to deal with the problem. So if, if I have a second up here, I'd like to at least do that for the first several months until we can get you stabilized.
I would second that. So that, that's very important. When, when 911 gets called, you know what happens? People can die in a heartbeat without it.
All right, they count on you, so. Are we good with that? Monthly?
Just a, yeah, I think that we'd be okay with that.
I don't care if it's status update or HR or whatever you want to do, but let's do that.
It'll take time, but.
Oh, I know.
To start seeing some turnaround.
But, but getting these updates from you, we can spitball, we can try to come up with ideas to help you.
No, I'd agree.
I don't think anyone up here wants to be in a position where people are getting, call us back the next business day or, you know, fast, busy because they can't get through.
Yeah, we won't get to that point, but.
Okay.
Get it riding along.
All right.
So in terms of publishing high at a 2.5% tax increase, that would give you like $127,000 extra that we could put in a pool. And then specifically for 911, I believe they're getting retention bonuses right now. Um, and then specifically for nine one one, I believe they're getting retention bonuses right now.
They are, but it ends as of October one.
Yeah, so just speaking in terms of the budget, um, I'm not really worried if you wanna do retention bonuses next year. I mean, they're not on track to even spend their entire A-budget this year.
No, and that's from salary savings, yeah, so that's, that part's not a problem. It's just something that I don't know when it's gonna require additional resources.
You're thinking a new matrix potentially?
I haven't even, I'm going on this meet, an hour and a half is when I'm, so, yeah.
Do you guys wanna consider a pool like we've done in the past? And that would give you, at two point five percent, would be, like you said, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand to look at.
Look, I, I'm okay to do it, just, you know, with the understanding that, uh, Commissioner Duncan, if you have something that's very concrete and you can make the compelling case, then we can talk about that. Otherwise, we'll stick with the two point.
Two nine.
Two nine percent.
Two point two nine.
Yep, that would be the final. But we're gonna agree to publish two point five with the understanding that there's an opportunity for Commissioner Duncan to bring before the board any additional types of expenditures that we might need for nine one one specifically, right? I mean, are there other things that?
Um, yes, that's, right now, my focus with that, I don't think there's anything else that would warrant.
And what's the COLA amount at this time?
Two point five percent COLA. So, yep, to circle back, right now, it sounds like the board is talking about a two and a half percent COLA and publishing the budget at a two point five percent tax increase with the potential to reduce that to a two point nine percent tax increase.
Two point two nine.
Two nine?
Yeah.
Um, but it kinda depends on what Commissioner Duncan comes back with.
With the intention of two point two nine, unless otherwise.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know.
Agreed upon by the board.
I give a potential pool, if you go to the two point five for publishing of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Until then, we can talk about at the budget hearing with nine one one.
All right, so for the meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
I will come prepared with a balanced budget at a two point five percent tax increase for the purposes of publication in the newspaper and at, at a two point five percent COLA. And then tomorrow, the three of you will have to vote to approve that, that budget because that's the tentative budget by law. And then when you vote to approve it, I will publish it. And at the end of August, we will have a public hearing and you'll officially vote to adopt the budget at that time. And by then, we can reduce the tax increase to two point two nine.
Um, how many nine one one positions are funded at fifty percent?
Uh, probably every single one of them, but that was the same thing in FY twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay, so I may just end up using some of that overage to refund some of those because I think, you know, we're just gonna have to be more aggressive with our recruiting, so.
For the la, I mean, every budget cycle that I've been here, we have funded almost every single jail and nine one one open position at fifty percent every single year.
How many positions do we have in nine one one that are vacant?
Let me get that for you.
Today.
I think we have right around ten.
Yeah, but there's a number that we're funding at fifty percent.
So I'm.
Should be the ten.
Based on the report I ran, which there can be some timing differences, I'm showing eight openings. Wait, no, that's just the ones in nine one over a hundred days. So they have eight that are being funded at fifty percent and then, let's see. And then they have another two that are open, so in total, they have ten openings. And then the jail just, yeah, the jail has one. These aren't all deputies, they're also custody technicians. Like nineteen positions and fifteen of them are being funded at fifty percent. I'll have those exact figures in my presentation at the end of August, but it's almost all their open positions.
So my other question is, um, we can go back and, um, kinda massage line items, correct? I mean, the only thing set in stone is that COLA and then.
And the total budget amount.
Right, um, so after, let's just say we even approve a two point two nine at the end of August, we can still go back to some of those line items and move them around, we're not stuck.
If you have time between the public hearing and the date we adopt, 'cause there's statutory time. So I, I have it scheduled that forty-eight hours after our public hearing, we'd meet for you to officially adopt the budget. But if there's changes you want to make before we adopt it, you would have to give me direction on that before, and the board would have to agree before we meet to adopt it.
Okay, thank you.
I think we had some other stuff over here too.
All right, so, um, Commissioner Everline, did you wanna look at, um, some of the personnel stuff? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so I believe offline, Commissioner Everline and I discussed on the personnel summary, line seven A, the senior maintenance operator. Initially, I was told by Jeff Voler that he was gonna cut that request due to the impending reorganization of his department and Repro-Graphics and the Repro-Graphics people being able to do some part-time maintenance work as well. Um, so that was initially gonna be voluntarily cut by Director Voler, but then later decided not to. And so I believe Commissioner Everline wanted to bring that up and see. And you correct me if I'm wrong, did you wanna talk about potentially cutting that line?
Yes.
Okay, do the other two commissioners have any thoughts?
Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I probably would just wanna hear from Jeff. I'm, I know that he's trying to operate really lean and, um, it's a need, but if this board decides to cut it, then.
Well, I guess he did ask, or at least proposed cutting it, so if something changed, it's probably a good idea to talk about that.
Um, yeah, when we were asked to give our priorities, um, I suggested for my maintenance team because we're probably on the lower end of the salary schedule, that a COLA was a higher priority for us. Um, I would say that position is a need, but I, you know, it is an add and I can function without it. But it would certainly help us with the addition of the Justice Center to keep that on. Um, we've had a lot of turnover, so this person that would maintain that position is actually a senior position that has been with the county for over ten years, that has some experience that would be beneficial for us. Um, so the priority that I gave was if it meant a COLA that we needed to cut it, I, I could give that up, but it is a priority and that's why that position is on.
Thirty thousand.
But you're also getting another custodian or a maintenance position, right?
Correct.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, janitorial, so, yeah, so they don't do the same thing.
Supposed to coincide with the reorg with Repro-Graphics, right?
Yeah, we, we discussed that, um, and that will come at, uh, Thursdays, next Thursday, sixth HR meeting. We have some proposals to, for some cost savings through a restructure of Repro-Graphics.
So will the, where, will there be Repro-Graphics people doing maintenance work? I don't fully know how that.
Well, in summary of that, so it, it would be, uh, freezing one of the Repro-Graphics positions and creating a part-time mail position and a part-time assistant maintenance operator. Um, we still have some, some concern that, you know, with adding the fifty thousand square feet that it's for one person to do, that's a lot, that's probably above the industry standard. And so with that halftime person, they could assist the maintenance team. That we would propose in the, with this Repro-Graphics reorg.
Does that make sense to you?
Yep, and then the other one is a residential appraisal tech.
Yeah, so the other one we had talked about was line forty A, the assessor's request to convert a residential appraisal technician to an appraiser one. And we had talked about that there was an existing appraiser one position that's been open for over a year. And so, um, talking to Commissioner Everline, we decided to bring that back for discussion again with the board if there is an appetite to cut that request or leave it in at this time.
And there's been an open position the entire time in there, so. It's a twelve thousand dollar difference. That's for the conversion, that's not getting rid of the, the tech person.
Correct.
Right?
It's converting the tech position into an appraiser.
Yeah. Yeah, my only, um, hesitancy with stuff like that is that we start getting into the world of telling people how to do their job, who they should have and things like that. And I, I'm reluctant to do that, even though I understand this increases the budget just by a very small amount in the scheme of things. Uh, it's the adding the positions because that is an overhead that we take on year in and year out.
All right, so it sounds like the board, there's not two commissioners who want to cut either of those requests?
I mean, are you good with that or? That's my only reluctance, is telling another elected official, you can't have what you want to do your job, you gotta work with this one.
Well, it had three hundred and eighty-eight days there that, that sparked it.
I, I agree with you and, um, you know, the, the other position has to be filled. But if it's not filled, I, I think there's a, is there a person that's in mind for this or is it?
I think that was the BIA, the, the tech to the BIA had a position, person in mind. I don't know that there's a person here.
Oh, okay.
But, um.
Dyson or? Just quick explanation, do you?
Question?
Well, the question has to do with the position conversion from a tech to an appraiser.
When, when we were evaluating it based on our analysis, it was determined that it was, um, important that we have to convert this to an appraiser and we wanted to add in those additional clerk positions. So, kinda changing it from a tech to a clerk. We, the, those FTEs have fallen off, but so we still believe that converting this to a full-time appraiser would be the most benefit, um, to keep lowering that, uh, parcel count per appraiser, but we'd like to get a full appraiser position in there.
What's your question, do we have an existing person, is that your question?
Well, the idea was, did you have a tech that you wanted to have as an appraiser? But I don't think that is the case.
Yeah, it just says residential appraiser.
So when we presented our budget, we presented our budget based upon the commissioner's request for metrics. We provided metrics, national standards based upon productivity and the parcel count. So based upon national standards, that's the FTE, full-time employee headcount that we need to perform those jobs. And so a moment ago, you mentioned you don't wanna tell us how to do our work, but we're telling you that's what we need.
Yeah, but I'm not telling you how to do your work.
Well, in terms of what we need to do our work.
Well, I, I was just addressing, uh, the comment from Commissioner Everline who was interested in, you know, questioning why do we need to keep this position if there's still a, an appraisal position that's been open for a year? And that's where I, I said I typically don't wanna go down that road.
What I'm saying, I support, I, I agree with your comment.
Okay.
And, and that, that is what we need. The original budget request is what we need to get the work done because we're kind of at a critical juncture to.
I would address Commissioner Everline, just because it's, he was the one asking the question.
It's, it's three hundred and eighty-eight days in there, so that's.
Right, well, we, and we talked about this in the previous budget hearing where we have limited windows of opportunity to actually do the one-on-one training with the staff when we hire them. And, and we haven't hit that right. We, we need to readjust how we do things in terms of just bringing them on board. Again, that was discussed in the previous budget hearing, which is our commitment to do that. Nonetheless, the board decided to cut the position, so.
Does that answer your question?
I guess. So you wanna leave it open for another?
That's our request, yes.
And, and when do you expect to, um, to fulfill it?
Uh, post-haste. Our plan is to, to get it filled as quickly as possible, depending upon the pool of qualified applicants.
Okay.
So, uh, let me ask.
You can do it quickly.
This question. Um, with that position, um, I think I've already lost the number. Oh, here it is. So you do not need this residential appraisal tech. Who will handle that workload if you no longer need that position?
So, to give you the history, uh, we had two appraiser positions in our office going back a year ago. And we asked to convert one of those appraisers to a tech, which is what we did. Those positions were not filled, so there's no one doing that work right now. This year, when we made our budget request, we also requested two appraisal technicians, which is gonna be the same thing, it was a little confusing in the way we presented it and I apologize for that. So we're not really saying that the work of the appraisal tech will go away. That's there, that's to provide support work for the appraisers. So to answer your question, we have nobody doing that work right now. It's a need that's being unmet.
Was that actionable? Did you wanna do anything?
No, I just had a question.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Brandy?
All right, so it doesn't sound like we're gonna make any cuts to the personnel. I wanted to clarify, the ALPR for the Sheriff's Office, it sounded like Commissioner Everline wanted to add that back and then was there a second commissioner that wanted to add that back to the budget?
Uh, I've said all along, I'm, I'm okay with that 'cause there's a difference between funding it and authorizing the purchase. And the deal with the Sheriff's Office was that they were gonna give a presentation to show how effective this system was, this system and not any other system. So that was the deal and I plan on standing by that deal. Uh, and then it'll be up to the Sheriff's Office to show what this program can do.
Right, so we will, I will add that back in. Okay, so I'll come tomorrow with the balanced budget of a two and a half percent COLA and we'll publish high at a two and a half percent tax increase with the intention to reduce that to two point two nine.
Unless otherwise agreed upon.
Unless otherwise agreed upon.
Yes.
All right, that's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, well, with that said, we'll move on to public comment. Anybody on the telephone? No? Three fifty-five, meeting adjourned.